Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board meeting for the month. At this time, I would like to introduce General Sessions Judge Ben Hall McFarland, who will induct or install our new board members. Judge?
Thank you.
Chairman Campbell? You're welcome. Glad to have you with us.
It is completely my pleasure, what an honor and privilege to be before such a wonderful body that makes an amazing difference in our community and that other communities try to hold themselves up to a board such as this. So, thank you for allowing me to do this.
Glad to have you.
So, for our new members, let's all stand. That makes it more formal, but you will stand please. And if you would face me, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the State of Tennessee
that I will support the Constitution of the State of Tennessee
and of the United States
and of the United States
and the acts constituting
and the acts constituting
the Charter of the City of Murfreesboro
the Charter of the City of Murfreesboro
and that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully
zealously and impartially
zealously and impartially
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
of a member of the City Board of Education
of a member of the City Board of Education
and of the City of Murfreesboro
and of the City of Murfreesboro
without fear or favor
without fear or favor
and for the public welfare
and for the public welfare.
Congratulations.
It is now official.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Come back any time and visit more often.
You're a real member of the family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Welcome to our new members, too, that have been with us before, and Phil King, who is our newest member of the board. Phil, we're glad to have you with us.
I'm glad to be here, Butch. Thank you very much.
I'll now turn the business over to our staff attorney, Kelly Baker.
All right, good evening. The first item you have on your agenda is the election of a board chair due to Ms. Wade's departure from the board. So, according to board policy, B.O. 3, and according to state statute, T.C.A. 49-2-202 C. 2, and Section 25-6 of the Murfreesboro City Code, board officers are to be elected annually, and when there isn't a vacancy in a board office, there is to be an election to fill that vacancy. And this vacancy will be filled until the end of Ms. Wade's term, which would have ended in October as chair. So, come October, there will be new elections for chair. And the state statute mandates that the board only elect a board chair, but our board policy does mandate the board elect a chair and vice chair. And as I said, the term of this office will run through October 31st of 2014. Now, nominations for board chair will be given, followed by a roll call for votes, and then nominations...well, first we'll start with nominations for board chair will be given, and then we'll do a roll call for the votes. A majority of the entire board, not just those present, which is four votes, is necessary for one to be voted into office. Now, I will take nominations for board chair. Yes?
I'd like to nominate Butch Campbell.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, see none. All closed nominations. Ms. Price, if you'll take the role?
Mr. Barrett.
Butch Campbell.
Mr. Brown.
Butch Campbell.
Mr. Campbell.
Butch Campbell.
Mr. King.
Butch Campbell.
Ms. Phillips.
Butch Campbell.
Ms. Rehneer.
Mr. Campbell.
And Ms. Smith.
Mr. Campbell.
Congratulations, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you very much.
Can you move over here, huh? So you can move into the seat of honor.
Well, I could only do that if this thing quit ringing.
And now that Mr. Campbell's position as vice chair is vacant, there's a need for us to have an election for vice chair. So, I will take nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Nancy Phillips.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Nancy Rehneer.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, see none. Ms. Price, would you please call the role?
Dr. Brown.
Nancy Rehneer.
Chair Campbell.
Nancy Rehneer.
Mr. King.
Nancy Rehneer.
Ms. Phillips.
Nancy Phillips.
Ms. Rehneer.
Nancy Rehneer.
And Ms. Smith.
Nancy Phillips.
And Mr. Barrett.
Mr. Barrett.
Mr. Bear.
It's okay. Nancy Rehneer.
Congratulations, Ms. Rehneer.
Congratulations. Vice Chair.
Okay, now I will turn the meeting over to you, Mr. Campbell.
Do I need to move?
Yes.
Yes. First, let me say thank you to the board. I appreciate your vote of confidence and hope that I can continue the legacy that Mary Wade has set forth for several years as chair of this group, and we will proceed. At this point in time, we'd like to ask you to please stand as we honor our country and our flag with our pledge, followed in by a moment of silence. I'm going to ask Mr. Phil King, if he will, to lead us in our pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion made and a second. All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Communications, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, first, I'd like to congratulate our board members and Mr. King, welcome aboard. Thank you all for your continued service, those of you who were newly elected, and those of you who remain on the board, thank you so much for what you do for us. I'd like to, first of all, let you know that Mayor McFarland did call me. He sensed his regrets, he cannot be with us tonight for the installation, but he certainly is very supportive of this school district, and I appreciate very much what he does for us and his commitment to children. And I would like to also thank Vice Mayor Doug Young for being here in the audience, and also thank again Judge McFarland for coming and doing the swearing in. There will be a Leader in Meet overview session on Wednesday, May 14th, at 4:00 p.m. in the gym of Mitchell Nelson, and you certainly are welcome to come. This session will really kick off the Leader in Meet program and is open to the public. Also, we have at Mitchell Nelson a Career Day on May the 15th from 9:00 until 11:00. And then our Retirement Dinner will be on Thursday, May the 15th at 6:00 p.m. This will be honoring all retirees who have retired this last year, and I'm going to read that list of retirees. They are Cheryl Baxter from Casey Lane, Donalee Bragg from Irma Segal, Ken Casilla from the Central Office, Daphna Hayes from the Central Office, Linda Gerald from Mitchell Nelson Elementary, Nancy Lawson from Irma Segal Elementary, Julia McLanahan from Northfield, Melinda McFarland from Bradley, Connie Middleton from the Central Office, Brenda Nanny from Black Fox, Anidra Newman from Irma Segal, Diana Prim from the Central Office, Linda Ridley from the Central Office, Cheryl Sexton from Bradley, Jana Summer from Irma Segal, and Helen Willis from Transportation. And we certainly thank those retired employees for their service to this school district and to the children, and we wish them well in their retirement. Recently, Mitchell Nelson librarian Shannon Minner, along with Lineball librarian Rita Shacklet, presented information about the partnership that we have between the school district and Lineball at the Tennessee Librarians Association Conference. And I'm going to ask Shannon if she will come and tell you a little bit about that partnership. They represented Murfreesboro extremely well and had great interest from other school districts and other librarians about what we were doing here in Murfreesboro. So, welcome Shannon. If you could share with the board and the public, please, a little bit about that partnership, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, well, thank you for having me this evening. Two years ago, Rita Shacklet with Lineball and Dr. Gilbert approached three of the schools about starting a partnership where we would sign children and teachers up for a public library card. And then through this program, they were also allowed to go online and begin to place holds on books, and then the books began circulating through our Pony system. So, they were being delivered straight to the school and into the hands of the teachers and the students, and then when they were finished, they can also return those books on the Pony system. And so, this most recent school year, this program got opened up to all of the city schools, and we signed up loads of teachers and students, and it's been a great asset to them and supporting the curriculum. So, we're looking forward to a third year with the changes that we have going on and signing up more teachers and students and accessing the materials they have through their public library system.
Do you have any questions for Shannon? It's a unique partnership, and it's really terrific. And I have to mention that Mr. Anderson also helped with that presentation since I had to be someplace else, so thank you very much. But thank you, Shannon, very much for that. I appreciate it.
And we also have with us the principal of Reeves Rogers School, Lori Offit, and she's
going to be talking about the logo and the mascot and the school colors of Reeves Rogers. So, welcome, Lori.
Thank you all, and it's nice seeing you tonight. I'm very excited to announce to you guys and to the public for the first time, and also with the help of Lisa Trail through Central Office coordinating a lot of what the parent committee has done at Reeves Rogers, we're proposing that we are going to be the Reeves Rogers Mustangs. There in the community of MTSU, we wanted to play off some of the things going on there in that particular neighborhood, but still have our own identity. So, we are going to be the Mustangs, playing off of what we have with the MTSU Blue Raiders. Our Mustang, our mascot's going to be nicknamed Thunder, since lightning is right across the street. There you go. And I'm sure on the first day, we'll have a little meeting of thunder and lightning there on the sidewalks welcoming all the kids to Reeves Rogers. Our colors are going to be red and silver. Again, we wanted to pull kind of in with the neighboring partnership of MTSU. We did the silver, but we also wanted to have our own identity, so we went with the red. So, I'm very excited, very pleased. The parents helped, community members helped. We had a small committee of parents that are going to be Reeves Rogers parents next school year. We also sent out an email blast with the system-wide newsletter to get feedback. There wasn't one consistent symbol or mascot that was returned. Mustangs was presented, though, so we did like that. We liked the tie-in there with the neighboring partnerships we're going to build with MTSU, but again, we still wanted our own identity as well. So, I'm very excited, very pleased, and I think the community around the area will be really excited and embrace this.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions that you have for Lori? Yes?
I can't let this opportunity go by. I think this is Ms. Offit's first time to address this as a principal, and I am personally very excited about Ms. Offit taking that post. She is a dynamic leader, and Reeves Rogers is going to go back to being a neighborhood school, and everyone seems really excited, so I can't wait to see all the great things, aside from the logo, that come out of the school. Those are great logos, but I'm really excited about the leadership of Ms. Offit.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, I can't wait. I know the faculty, the staff that's already been established, I know we're excited, we're ready to get in there and build a community school in that area again, so we're very excited. I also want to take this time, since we are going to be the Reeves Rogers Mustangs, one of the things that a lot of systems are going to are 12-month calendars for principals, but I'm willing to take this in a different direction and possibly go for a company car, possibly a Mustang, red, gray interior. I don't know. I'm thinking I would look really good going down Greenland in the Mustangs, so.
We'll talk about that contract later.
I'm just telling you if you have a football team, then they don't get in trouble, I guess than you did.
In this Mustang, or whatever that you like, you may not be old enough to remember, several of us will. Do you want that to be a hardtop or a ragtop?
Ragtop, please.
Ragtop.
Yes, and I will give you the first ride there, Mr. Campbell, okay?
Thank you. Don't hold your breath.
Do you guys have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. We'd like to congratulate our Tri-Borough 100% Classroom Challenge winner, Ms. Taysha Brooks Classroom from Scales Elementary. Her classroom has won $250 toward healthy physical activity supplies for the classroom as well as an iPad for the classroom. The Tri-Borough Challenge is a challenge where students are involved in physical activity, and we had several schools that participated, and I want to thank Mary Lee Smith, who's our coordinated school health person, for being our link there. But congratulations to Ms. Brooks. Also, congratulations to the 2014 Murfreesboro City Schools art competition winners, and you do have a list of those on your desk, and some of those art, some of the pieces of artwork are now hanging in the Central Office, and I really enjoyed it. But we particularly want to congratulate Best of Show Macy Bramble from Irma Segal for her award. We'd like to also talk about the Science Olympiad winners. We had Science Olympiad, which is a competition, and I think there were 16 teams or more that competed at Irma Segal. This was begun by Pat Patterson, Dr. Pat Patterson, in the Chemistry Department at MTSU several years ago, and there were six awards given, and Murfreesboro City received four of those awards. So, I would like to congratulate Discovery School on their second-place award, Northfield on their third-place award, Black Fox on their fifth-place award, and Scales on their sixth-place award, and to thank those teachers that worked with their children, preparing them also for the Science Olympiad. It was quite an event, and I really appreciate Roseanne. She has hosted, Roseanne Barton has hosted this at Pittard since it began several years ago, and it's a whole Saturday in the prep, but it just rolls beautifully, and so I appreciate her working with Pat Patterson to organize that every year. Mitchell Nelson has a couple of different folks to thank. First, we'd like to thank the Realtors of Bob Parks' Northfield Boulevard office, especially Sun F.P., for paying for the teacup celebrations. They donated $400, which will be used for the high flyers, field trip to the Murfreesboro Airport, a visit from Kona Ice, and popsicle parties. And also, Mitchell Nelson would like to thank Stones River Church of Christ for their donation of $200 toward their field trip fund. And I would like to announce to you that we are expanding our food service program. This is our summer food service program that is a federal program. It's administered by the Tennessee Department of Human Services under an agreement with the USDA. Free meals are available to children who are 18 years or under, and I'm going to read out the location for the food service program this summer. This will be breakfast and lunch, and we will have this posted on our website, but those sites are the Franklin Heights Center, Oakland Court Center, Patterson Park, McFadden Center, Black Fox, Mitchell Nelson Elementary, Northfield, Bradley, John Pittard, Hobgood, Casey Lane, Olive Branch Church, Stone Creek Apartments, Roland Acres Apartments, Allen Chapel, and Circe Street. And I want to thank the churches, and also I want to thank our partnership with, as you know, with Parks and Rec is really amazing, and the one expansion particularly to Circe Street. I'm going to let Mr. Anderson talk just a little bit about the mobile bus and what that's going to look like and what that will do, because it's exciting. It's the first year we've had that, and I think the community needs to know about that.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. One of the things that the summer feeding program always pushes for is to increase the availability to the community, and Sandy Shealy always wants to feed every child she can possibly find to feed, and so we've expanded utilizing the mobile bus. Now, the mobile bus is a retired school bus, one of our retired buses that we cannot put on the road anymore, but we can take it out to sites, set it up, have children come on and eat their meals, and then move on to another location. So, we have a mobile bus, we'll be rolling that out here in the next few days. It's getting a wrap on it now with graphics, it's air-conditioned, and we'll be showing everybody how that looked, but this is a great expansion. The USDA and the Department of Human Services are going to come and help us with our ribbon cutting on it when it's ready to go, and we just thought you needed to know what a wonderful move this is to utilize a bus that we can't use for transportation anymore, but we can make it an asset to the district.
So, we're very excited about that, so it's good to be able to feed the children that are, again, 18 years and old and under without any charge, and so that's a great benefit to the community. The Soccer Jamboree, we've had soccer in ESP, and the Soccer Jamboree will take place this Friday. We were supposed to hold it last Friday, but it rained, and so the Soccer Jamboree will be this Friday at Richard Segal Park. 5:30 will be second and third graders, and then 7 o'clock, fourth through sixth graders. And I want to thank the ESP program and also Coordinated School Health. They have worked to get the soccer program going, and this is something that our schools have been asking for, so we're delighted that that has happened. And finally, in communications, and I say this for last because I think it's extremely special, I'm going to ask Mr. Joe Thompson if he would come up to the podium, please. Mr. Thompson is the principal at Black Fox Elementary School, and as you know, Black Fox is an excellent school. All of our schools are excellent, but I'm going to ask him to come up, and the reason I'm asking him to come up is because we had a celebration at Black Fox that some of you were able to attend, and I really appreciate that. The Education Consumer Foundation acknowledges schools who have high value added, whose principals have been at that school for at least five years, and that is the case at Black Fox. And so, we were very excited and grateful when we got the call that Black Fox was going to be recognized, and I wanted Joe to come to the podium because his school was named 18th, ranked 18th out of 765 schools. Joe, I'd like for you to talk just a little bit about how you do that, and also I know you want to thank the teachers, too, but I want to thank you for your leadership, and I'm glad that Zane Cantrell was here previously because I think he set the bar, and I had the privilege of working with both of you, so thank you for being here tonight, Joe.
Well, I just wanted to show you how good we are. Two of our former students were here tonight. Phil's children, I've known Phil for a long time before he was famous and elected in the city, so it's good to see Phil up there. You know, basically, it starts with y'all. The city council comes down to you guys, and then Dr. Gilbert and her support, and she has a wonderful Central Office staff that have worked with our teachers and done just marvelous work with us. The bottom line of it is, it comes down to the teachers. The work that the teachers do every day is the secret to it. I got a lot of credit on that celebration and stuff, but I don't feel like it's deserved. The teachers work with those kids, and they work after school, and they work before school, and people don't realize just how much preparation and time goes and the stress levels they put up with, because teaching is not just about teaching. It's about wiping noses, it's about consoling, it's about keeping order, it's about keeping focus and keeping love. And like we said, and this is really one of Mr. Cantrell's, I thought he made it up, but come to find out, it was Theodore Roosevelt, and he took full credit for that for all those years at Black Fox. He kept putting it out on everything, he said, "Nobody cares how much you know until they know how much you care." And one thing about the Black Fox teachers is they care a lot, and they care about their kids, they care about them academically and socially and emotionally, so all those things come in, but we work extremely hard. The teachers do a lot of intervention. We have some of the, I mean, I'm not trying to insult anybody, but I am biased. I think that Black Fox is the best staff in the state of Tennessee. They are a marvelous group to work with, and, you know, they like me most days, but they don't like me every day, and that's okay. So, what we do is we divide the kids up, we meet the needs, we try real hard to meet the needs of every child in the school. We have a lot of meetings, we break down everything that we can to every child. That's not only in the monthly meetings, but in our weekly PLC meetings, and I do want to really thank Dr. Gilbert for allowing us to be part of the PLC group, and when she first introduced it, it was a little bit scary because it was a completely different thing than I had done in a, well, a long time, so I'm not going to tell you how long I've been doing this, but this is my 39th year. And so, you know, that was only a few years ago, so it was a big change, and I found it after the rough start, with a lot of things, there's very few things worth doing unless they're challenging. If there's not a challenge to something you do, then your expectations are too low. So, we believe in challenges. So, we challenged our staff, and we, yes, it wasn't always a popularity contest at the first, but due to the leadership and the strength that Dr. Gilbert exhibited, and then with the Central Office staff and the amount of training that we went through as principals before we ever brought it to the teachers was crucial, and Bob Aker really helped out there and did a lot of work with us. So, it's never just about us, it's about everybody that's involved with the child, and y'all should be proud. This is the school board's award also, it's Murfreesboro Children's Award. This award is a very special award. I realize that for the last few years, we'd let our school system in value-added growth, and I was really hoping one day somebody would notice, and they did, so that's cool. But just like everything, I've already told the staff, we want to repeat, so we're already looking for next year and do it again. So, if we do it again, I'm not going to talk so much, okay? But anyways, I don't know exactly what all you want, but we break down everything for every child, both academically and both socially and emotional. We try to meet the needs of the children wherever they are. No damaged children can learn the way they should learn, so many of our children, you must give them the support and the healing they need so they can feel safe and comfortable, and they can trust and have the love and the faith that they can do something, and our students, no matter where they come from, have proven that they can be successful.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Mr. Thompson or comments?
I just...
Yes, Penny, go ahead.
I just have a comment. Several of us were at the celebration, and it was so nice, and just such a great honor for you and for your staff. I know how hard those people work, as you said earlier, and for your children. You know, it's for your children as well, because everything you do is for the children. We all know that. And wasn't it like 16th or 18th out of 700 and almost 800 schools, so you really need to be commended.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thompson, congratulations. To show the kind of principal you are, you remember my children, and they've long been gone from Black Fox. I'm a proud father to Black Fox alumni. You've earned this, your teachers have earned this, and y'all enjoy this moment and be proud of it. You remind me of something Baxter Hobgood said a long time ago. He said, "I surround myself with good people who don't mind that I take the credit." Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
I just had something to say. Mr. Thompson, a big thank you to you and your staff, and I think this is a very meaningful award because the value added, it takes a child, and it measures the child's growth for one year, and it doesn't matter how much outside family enrichment, or where they come from, or what they have or don't have, it just values what happens for each individual child in the classroom, and that really speaks well of you and your staff, and I just really wanted to congratulate you personally, so thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Brown?
Well, I'd like to compliment the students. It shows the leadership that you and the teachers have had at Black Fox, because in the celebration, when we were all in the auditorium, the children were totally appropriate. They were cheering enthusiastically when they needed to cheer enthusiastically, and they sat very quietly and listened when they needed to sit quietly and listen. So, to have an auditorium full of elementary school students who exhibited that type of behavior, I think shows why you've been very successful. You've done a great job, so my compliments to you, your staff, and the children.
Thank you very much.
Mary Ann? I will add an amen in to what everybody has said, being that I live across the street, I have an opportunity to watch that place quite often, and particularly late in the afternoons when I'm out walking with my dog, but you have done a good job, a very good job at Black Fox. You've carried on legacies, not only from Black Fox, but also legacies of Murfreesboro City School System, and we've had a lot of good administrators, and we continue to have great administrators, and you have proven to be one of the top. Thank you for your hard work and your dedication. Thank you for your hard work and your dedication to the young people that attend Black Fox School.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate you looking after our school in the afternoons. The Campbell security system is excellent.
Thank you, Joe. And those are your communications.
Ms. Phillips had a question from Thompson previously.
Okay, sure.
I had a couple of comments and then some questions. First of all, I too want to congratulate the teachers who prepped the kids for the Science Olympia and the art contest, because that goes, a lot of work goes into the art contest, too. But getting down to the summer food program, Mr. Anderson, a couple of questions. I was wondering, the wrap for the bus, which budget did that come out of?
School nutrition budget.
School nutrition budget. And how utilized by kids out of the school system is this nutrition program?
Well, the vast majority of students who participate in this program, the law says we have to open it up to children up to 18. Very rarely does anyone over elementary age ever come to it, but we have to open it to them.
Okay, okay. So, are we trying to promote that within the community or...?
Well, part of the reason this is on your agenda tonight is one of the requirements is that it's made as a public announcement that we do that, and then it's put on our website and we put in the individual schools.
Okay. I think it's exciting, very exciting for the community, and I appreciate your leadership in that.
Ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Looking at consent items, minutes of our April 22 meeting and approval of school fees. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And of course, there is none. All right. Action items.
The school is...
The first item you have on your agenda is appointment of a board member as a sick bank trustee. Ms. Wade served as one of the two board members that serve as trustees. Ms. Phillips is the other board member serving as a trustee to the sick bank. And the state statute, as I shared with you earlier, indicates that when there's a vacancy, we need to, the board as a whole, needs to appoint a board member to that position to serve out the remainder of the term that Ms. Wade was filling as a sick bank trustee. So, y'all would need to make some...
How long does that term last? Do you know?
It's a three-year term. I'm not sure where Ms. Wade was in the term.
Do you know, being that you're on there with her?
We can find that out and let the appointed member know.
I have a recommendation for a person to fill that position.
Okay.
Dr. Brown.
Any other recommendations? Guess we'll need a second to that as a motion, is that right?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
I don't know what it is.
Under state law, school systems are allowed to set up sick leave banks where employees can donate one of their sick leave days to the bank, and then an employee that is in need of extra sick leave can draw sick leave from that bank. For example, it typically comes into play if someone has a serious illness and is on FMLA leave and may need some additional sick leave so they can remain on a paid status. And the trustees of the sick bank will review those requests, and that's basically what the sick bank does.
Thank you.
How many trustees are there?
There are, two members are appointed by the school board and two from the school system's professional organization. So, MEA has appointed two members.
Okay.
And there's a fifth, and the fifth trustee is the director of schools. So, there's five in all, two board members, two teachers, and then the director.
Okay.
And just for some further information, you don't ever attend a meeting. This is all sent to you at your home.
All right, we have a motion made and a second to elect Dr. Brown as our other member of the sick bank as a trustee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Brown, congratulations.
Thank you.
We know that you will handle it well. Approval of policies. Kelly, second reading?
The policies that you have before you tonight have been approved by the board on first reading at the last regular meeting. I've set at your spots a packet of tracked policies that include all the changes that were recommended at the last board meeting. I believe some of the policies that were online didn't reflect all of the changes. So, the first policy is correct online. It's Board Policy PER2 regarding unemployment compensation. There had been no recommended changes to that policy as it was currently proposed. It is just before you for review. And what I would be seeking tonight is a motion to approve on second reading.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion, question? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you, and if you would, please look at the packet that I set on your desk, is Board Policy STU1, Emergency Closings. You can see I have in red the changes that were made to this policy from the current one. Are there any additional questions regarding this policy?
Any question on the policy? Do we need a motion to pass it on second reading?
Yes.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Barrett. Does he have a second?
I second that.
Ms. Smith? Any question? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you is in the packet as well. It is Board Policy STU2, School Year, School Calendar. This policy you passed at the last meeting on first reading, and it is, has very minor changes from the current policy on the books. You'll see there in line one, that has been changed to clarify 180 days of instruction.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Although, any question? Although, I'm sorry, Ms. Rineer?
I know that we passed this on first reading, but my question is, since we are deleting those two days at the end of this year, should, would that affect this?
No. Those two days are coming from the stockpile days.
The stockpile days, okay, okay. Then I'm all in favor.
All right. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy is also in your packet. It's Board Policy STU6 regarding School Day. This policy was passed at the last meeting on first reading. The changes to the policy are reflected there in red, and this also is a current policy on the books, just a slight revision to clarify some language.
Any discussion on the policy? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Second?
Second.
Mr. Barrett? Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you is also in the packet. It's Board Policy STU8, Admission of Suspended or Expelled Students. This is a review of the current policy that is on the books. You approved it at the last meeting on first reading, and I have no changes to this policy. It is based strictly on state law.
Move to approve.
Ms. Phillips, does she have a second?
Second.
Ms. Rineer? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you for second reading is Board Policy STU12 regarding Student Accident Reports. That also is in the packet I put on your desk. It was approved at the last board meeting on first reading. The changes that had been recommended to the policy are to clarify that any accident involving students which occurs on the property of Murfreesboro City Schools is to be reported to the director or the designee. So, that added an option for the director to designate someone to receive those reports. Also, the last sentence there was added, that a copy of the accident report would be forwarded to the city of Murfreesboro's risk manager. And the reason for that is that the school system is part of the city's self-insurance fund, and any general liability issues are covered by the, handled by the city's risk manager.
Okay, Dr. Brown?
In thinking about this, accidents can occur involving city students not on city property, field trips. So, does that need to be covered in this policy, or is it covered in another policy? Because this specifically states on the property of Murfreesboro City Schools.
And that, because of the field trips, the liability may be different depending on the nature of where they're at, and there are releases that the students sign when they go on the field trips. So, this policy is designed to deal with those accidents that occur on city-school property. I will research if there's a need to develop another policy that more specifically addresses off-campus issues.
Good point.
Ms. Rineer?
Just as a point of clarification, who would send the copy to the risk manager? Would that be someone at Central Office, or would that be the teacher filing the report?
That will typically be whoever Dr. Gilbert designates to receive the copy from the school. And the school will send them into Central Office, and then someone from Central Office forces them on to the risk manager.
Okay.
Ms. Smith?
So, Dr. Gilbert, can you kind of outline the procedure? A child has an accident on the playground, then what happens?
Mr. Ringstaff, do you want to address that?
Right now, the accident reports are forwarded to the Central Office with Deborah Savely, and she works with the city, Mary States, and the risk management.
So, when the child has the accident, the teacher writes the accident report. They give it to...
They forward it up to Deborah Savely, and normally, they also send a copy to the city at that time. The teacher does as well. And then...
Send the copy to what, Ralph?
The accident report.
It didn't ever go through the principal or assistant principal?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sure the principal, the principal does get involved, and then they send it to the city, along with the copy to Deborah Savely.
Yeah, but you're going to have your teacher that's going to be filling it out or informing the principal of what happened because they'll know firsthand.
The same procedure goes along with the workers' comp. If the teacher gets hurt, then the principal and the teacher sends a copy to the city government and then also to HR.
Thank you.
I would hope that it would not occur, but I wonder, because the question has been brought forth, do we need to spell out that this teacher needs to give to the principal? Surely, to goodness, that would happen.
Yes, it certainly do.
Okay, all right.
It used to be on the forms.
Yeah.
A copy goes to your principal, a copy goes...
Other questions on Policy STU12? Due to enact?
A move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Rineer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barrett? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the last policy that you have before you tonight for review for second reading is Board Policy STU15 regarding Student Records Inspection and Correction Procedures. This policy was approved on first reading at the last board meeting, and some of the revisions that were recommended at the last board meeting were that FERPA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, be spelled out in line 34. And then, there had been a recommendation in line 75 that it be specified that the panel that hears any appeals consists of three Murfreesboro City School administrative staff members who do not have a direct interest in the outcome of the hearing. Those were some of the changes that were recommended at the last meeting.
No questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next item on your agenda is approval of the Differentiated Pay Plan. And this is being brought to you tonight because on, the state requires every school system to adopt a differentiated pay plan, and that plan must be submitted to the State Department of Education on June 1st of each year. And the plan that, I believe they put a copy of that plan on your desk, the plan states that the Murfreesboro City School System will pay a signing bonus of up to $2,000 to attract teachers in areas where a shortage of qualified teachers exist, such as ESL, Behavior Modification, or Comprehensive Development. And in paren, it says that is not an inclusive list. Each year, there will be a determination by the director of schools of the areas which will receive the signing bonus. And this is a plan that is required under state law, and the Department of Education has set out guidelines to be utilized when developing a differentiated pay plan.
This is something that we've discussed several times. It's been on the books, and I think it's still a pretty volatile issue. We did not go with a total revamping of the salary, as you know. We do have to have some sort of differentiated pay plan. This would allow us to designate, and I would advise that this year would probably be in the area of ESL where we see that. I believe the county has designated their differentiated pay plan, the area of need to be, I believe, high school, science, or math. But I feel that ESL is an area where it is difficult to attract a lot of quality teachers. And so, I think that this year, that should be what this is. But this will allow us to keep our salary schedule as we have it. It will allow us not to make any major changes until some of this washes out at the state level. And what we basically would be saying that, yeah, if we hire an ESL teacher, a new ESL teacher, that we could give that person up to, up to $2,000 extra for a signing bonus. And we do have to have something in place that would be like that from the state law. Yes? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Barrett?
So, you're basing this off need, where the ESL is?
Right.
Because I noticed you had the other three down, so, okay, so, okay.
Okay, Ms. Phillips?
It says each year, there will be a determination by the director of schools of the areas that will receive the signing bonus. Would this go before the board?
I would inform the board, yes, like we are now, right. And it'll be based on need.
Does it, is there some state law precedent about, because to me, this is something that should, the board should have some input on?
Well, I think, I think that the guideline there, it has, when you look at what the guidelines are, there are several ways you can go with this, but one of the least intrusive is to go with a signing bonus rather than to go with an entire salary. And I'm assuming that the reason the director of schools there would be the person that would be making that determination would be because that person would have an awareness of where the shortage would be and where the difficulty would be.
I hear what you're saying, and I don't disagree with you. I believe that that would be, but if we're talking about a differentiated pay system determined by the state, I just feel like the board should have some input on... determined by the state, I just feel like the board should have some input on how we differentiate. And we probably just take your recommendation, but I do feel like the board should have some input on that. Is there, is there any legal information, Ms. Baker, about that?
Well, the state law says that the board shall adopt a differentiated pay plan. So this is the general plan that you would adopt. That's, that's the way the state law reads, is that the board has to adopt the pay plan.
Okay, so do we have to adopt it every year or?
If you're going to change it, yes, you would adopt it every year. They would bring this pay plan before you every year prior to June 1st so that the board can adopt and approve the differentiated pay plan for the upcoming school year.
And what happens then is we submit it to the state and they can approve it or they can tell us to come back and do some more work on it, at which point I would be coming to you.
Now, personally, I would like us to have some dialogue about it, you know, shortly before you bring it to the board. I'm sure that we, you know, your recommendations would be the one we would follow, but I just feel like differentiated pay is a hot topic.
Right.
And people are talking about it a lot. And I don't see it going away, you know, anytime real soon. I just feel like it's important to keep a dialogue going about that. You know, I think this is great, a great way to use, to expend the money, but that's just my thought on it.
Okay.
Ms. Smith?
So with ESL in mind, how many additional ESL teachers do you think that you'll be hiring this year?
We're projecting only, we're projecting two. Okay.
And do you, it says up to $2,000.
That's, and that's something we haven't not discussed until we get this approved to see what we can do.
And where did you get the $2,000? Was that part of the...
That would come out of the budget. That would come out of the personnel budget. The amount there, if we're looking at only, and one reason that I would advise going with this plan is I think you're looking at minimal disruption to the system.
Ms. Renier?
That's basically what I was going to say. We don't want to, we've had discussions about this off and on because we knew that there was a possibility this was coming. We don't want to say teacher A gets more money than teacher B for doing the same job. So I think that this is an easy way to, maybe that's the wrong thing to say, a good way to ease into it because we do know we have the need with ESL or perhaps Behavior Mod. Maybe I'm not too bright, but what do you mean by not an inclusive list? Do you mean that there may be other things that would be added on the list?
In other words, well, and I think this probably may be coming, we could add if we saw that there were other areas that we needed, but, but I don't foresee that this year. There could be something else. But right now, I think what we're seeing is a need for the ESL.
Right. Okay. And one little comment, we need a period at the very end. There's not a period there. And, yeah, I agree with Ms. Phillips that it would be nice to have some idea beforehand. I thought that we were under the impression this might fall by the wayside this year, but I know that they had given us a date originally, so...
They, they had, and Mr. Anderson, when he went to his finance conference two weeks ago, a week ago?
Last week.
Last week. Time flies when you're not around. But, but it's so much quieter. But it became clear at that conference that we would have to submit something.
We would have to submit something, okay. Well, I think it would be good to have some kind of a, when you make that determination to have...
Information.
You know, $500 for this or $1,000 for that or $2,000 for that. And maybe, maybe that's not realistic, but something of that nature.
I think it is. And I think one thing that we're seeing now, we saw a, a state law that came about this year that really had to do with the salary schedule. And I think there's going to be some more discussion of that by the state board. And so I think that it's wise that we do this instead of a full-fledged jump. I know that some systems have and, and I'm concerned about their ability to pay for it.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
I got a couple of thoughts. One, is there any way to put a date on this? This thing is open-ended and the way it says right now, it's going to be, I guess it's forever and ever.
It, it would be until next year when you, when you adopt another plan. And I think we'd see what washes out this year. We have to get it submitted to the state. They'll return it to us and say they have approved it or they haven't approved it. At that point, I'll come to you and say, okay, here's what's been approved, here's what I recommend that we do. But next year, we could change this. But so essentially, you're adopting this for a year.
Well, I would, I don't know whether it's possible to put a date on this plan before it's submitted or not. And I would like also, and I think some others have said as well, I would like to know what the list is rather than just saying live in an open-ended list. You know, we've mentioned ESL, Behavior Mod, or CD, but that does not prevent giving that to a PE teacher because this is not an inclusive list. I would like to see an inclusive list every year on what we're looking for and what we're going to give a differentiated pay for.
And one of the reasons for trying to allow that flexibility is that the law only allows you to provide differentiated pay if it is a hard-to-fill position. And they don't, may not necessarily know it's going to be a hard-to-fill position until they start trying to seek someone to fill that particular slot. And the position can be either a category such as ESL, Comprehensive Development or Behavior Modification, or it can be a school. Maybe it's difficult to get people that are willing to staff or work at a particular school. And the way the law's written is it's for positions or for a school. So that's, that's the only reason that I would have recommended that, that bit of flexibility because sometimes they may not know until they start doing interviews and trying to seek employees to fill those positions which ones are the hard-to-fill positions.
Mr. Barrett was next, and then back.
Just a few more things. So I know you answered Ms. Smith's question about the $2,000. How did you come up with the $2,000, the amount that you were going to give? Like, why not 1,500 or?
Well, I think the up to gives us the flexibility to do what we need to do. We could easily change that to, to another number.
I was just, oh, okay.
There's not a, there's not a designated number by the state on that.
And then one other thing, I agree, this is probably the less disruptive of the three, but can you remind the people at home what the other two, two options were?
And I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Ringstaff at this point, as far as the differentiated pay.
Let me address the $2,000. This paragraph really came from the old MEA contract.
Okay, thank you.
It was approved by the board each, every three years. And this, this paragraph per datum practically, except for the, is from the MEA contract. We could have done a wholesale change to the differentiated pay plan. We chose not to. We value our teachers getting advanced degrees and years' experience. We, we still want to reward those teachers doing that, seeking advanced degrees and rewarding them for the years' experience. Some pay plans, differentiated pay plans nowadays do not do that as much as we do. So we're taking a kind of a wait-and-see approach to the differentiated pay plan. We wanted to change it, as Dr. Gilbert stated, very slightly, as little as possible really to abide by the new law, but still reward our teachers for seeking advanced degrees.
But what were the other two plans? There was three, we had three choices, right? And we just said, unless you said it when you were...
Well, you can reward teachers for their evaluation scores, level four or five, give them supplements for that. I think as far as experience, a little bit, and you can go on down. We can reward, like Ms. Baker stated, we can supplement for schools, hard-to-fill positions at certain schools.
And we chose the...
Yes.
Hard-to-fill, okay. I just wanted to get it out there that there's three other options.
Yes.
We chose the lesser one, okay.
Yes.
Ms. Renier?
Wasn't one of them that there would only be so many steps, like there would only be one salary from the first through the fifth year and then the sixth through the 10th year? So it would totally have set our salary schedule on fire. It would have totally, it would have been total upheaval. So this, to me, is the lesser of all the evils. And we know that we need ESL teachers. You know, way back when I was young and started out, we had ESL teachers who didn't even speak a foreign language. So heavens, yes, we need them and, and I'm all for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Smith?
So I have a commentary and it is that part of it is it would be a challenge, I understand, because we have to have differentiated pay, but we're an elementary school system. So picking out the spots that would be challenging, this makes total sense. So in high school situations, there are definitely some other, some other areas, like the high school science teacher would be much more challenging. So one little technicality, and that is, can existing teacher move over to be an ESL teacher and get the $2,000 bonus?
That's a good question.
Okay. I'm looking at our ESL coordinator.
Well, I'll tell you how I would handle that. I would be calling the State Department and asking the attorney for that because I think that we need to get clarified. And Kelly, you may know, but so much of this right now is so new that literally, when we have a question like that, I would be calling the state and saying, and that's one thing we need to clarify, if they approve this, then that's something we need to have very clear.
Yeah, and y'all just need to understand, this is our plan we're submitting to the state. It's up to the state to approve it or disapprove it. So that's why we'd have to get guidance from them, whether that would fall under what is acceptable to them.
And then when that works out, then we've got a line out, okay, here's how we approach that.
Very simple question from Mr. Chair. Dr. Gilbert, Ms. Baker, generally, when are we, when, when is it known when you have a shortage? And I'll use the ESL as an example. Is it at the end of the school year or the beginning of the school year when we realize there's a shortfall?
Yes. It is.
Both? Both times a year?
Right now, we're looking at 50 more. For example, we're looking at 50 more ESL students right now than we had last year. So Ms. Hawkins is the one that really looks at that. And that's why when you look in, in your numbers and we're adjusting teachers around is because particularly with the rezoning where we may be having shifts in teachers. But you can also have it during the year. And I'm, Ms. Hawkins, would you come up and explain how, because the ratio really is based now by the state and it's changed? And, and I think it's important for them to know that because that did change this last year, I think. Karen, was it?
I think the ratio is 40 students to one teacher for ESL. And we are always right on the edge of having just enough teachers to do that. And for example, this spring, we had an opening in ESL at one of our schools. A teacher left in the middle of the year and we weren't able to fill that position. So we had to shift folks around just to cover the staff. And I would say that on aver, you know, what, on average, how many applicants do we have for each general ed position?
Oh, over 100.
And I may have seven, five, you know, and then we have to sort through and pick the most qualified to make sure that we're getting strong teachers for our students that are really very at risk. So that's, it just depends. Right now, we're looking to hire two and so we'll have to see what we come up with.
But in other words, you're looking to hire two right now, but come July and August, that number could change.
It could change because we could have some...
That's right.
We could have some teachers that leave. We, you know, there's a lot of things that could happen in that mix.
Okay.
So...
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
I was thinking that Ms. Smith's question, if I were at home watching, might have generated some questions when she asked, it was a really good question about could a teacher switch over? And I was wondering for the folks at home, what specialized training or certification does an ESL teacher have to have?
I'm going to turn that over again, Karen, but they do have to have certification. You have to have the ESL certification, which, and in fact, a few years ago, and I believe we used Race the Top money for it, but we used it to actually help get some of our teachers certified because we were that desperate for it. And MTSU does have certification and so we can pull from them, but even, even with that, we still struggle sometimes.
At a minimum, it's 18 hours of graduate credit. And some, some programs will do that as an add-on endorsement for a teacher with elementary certification. And to be honest, we like to have teachers that have elementary certification because rather than just the K-12 and they have that deeper background for instruction and for curriculum and the kind of things that our students need. So we look for teachers, we look for teachers that have elementary certification and ESL endorsement. There's also master's levels programs in, around this area. But we were able to help seven teachers in our district get that ESL certification and several of those have also gone into teaching into ESL.
Thank you.
This says that we will pay a signing bonus of up to $2,000, so forth. We don't have to do that if we find somebody that's willing to come at the salary that, on the schedule?
I think what also...
Or do we use that as a...
What also was made clear at the finance conference was that we had to have something in place. The reason for this law was because there was something on the books for several years that did have a little bit to do with differentiated pay that looked very much like this, but school systems were not using it. And so this, the state board this last year really enforced it and they have made it abundantly clear that we, I believe the term was that you said they use it, it couldn't just be on the books, but it had, we had to actually show that we utilized it.
Yes.
And we have that in the budget somewhere, as tight as it is?
Well, when we're hiring people, we don't know. When we put an amount in for, for teachers, we use an average rate for new teachers, so we, we don't know what they're going to come in at.
Right.
So $2,000 is the difference of maybe two years' experience.
I get you. Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
I move that we accept this differentiated pay plan for this upcoming school year to submit to the state.
Have a motion made by Ms. Renier. Do we have a second?
I'm on a second, but are we going to put the date in there? Or no?
I, I think that the assumption certainly is that it would be for this school year.
Okay.
And we, and we can do that. We will have to, next year, there will have to be another designation.
All right.
I'm sure. And depending on what happens this next year, there could be a lot of changes.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would like to ask that if we have this again next year, and I'm assuming that we will, that we maybe try to get it a little earlier rather than the, the last minute because we're not meeting again this month and it's got to be in by June, so we're kind of over a barrel at this point in time. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Thank you very much. Motion passed. Submit it to the state and tell them to take it.
Your reports and information, Mr. Anderson?
We have one report for you this evening, and that's on the enrollment report. We are up 15 students over last month. We're 43 students over last year. We are once again at 97% attendance, which is really good. It's pushing us up to hitting almost a 1% increase over last year, not quite. It's going to be hard though because our, our ninth month last year was 97.3, so it's going to be hard for us to, to beat that. But we, we have a goal here. We're going to try to get that. Again, our PTR numbers are still at 19.22 for K-3, 19.91 for 4-6, and overall district average of 19.47. And that's, any questions on any of the numbers? I'd be glad to answer them.
Chair.
Ms. Smith?
Can you tell us a little bit about the forecasting for next year?
Okay, forecasting for next year is extremely complicated because we're opening a new school and we're hoping to pull in additional students. There's a few different factors. One is we're hoping to pull in about 200 extra students to that school. One of the factors that kind of plays that down is we've reduced the number of pre-K classes. And also, the birth date of the kindergarten students dropped another 15 days, which could account to 4% of our, of our incoming kindergarten class. So we're really trying... So we're really trying to play it very cautiously. Another factor that we found out at our finance conference was, growth money has been cut in half for next year. The state has had a pool of $30 million to spread out for growth money. It is now down to 15 million to spread statewide. So every time I do the budget, I'm very cautious and don't include any money for growth, because we never know if we're going to benefit from it. So I've been very cautious on that. I did not project a 200 increase because of the kindergarten and the pre-K, so I projected less than 100 student increase, even though we'll have that, more new students than that come in. But that's how we're looking at for next year.
Ms. Renier?
I just want to piggyback on that. Do the preschoolers count in those numbers?
I counted them in your grand total, because we still have the expenditures of those students. They're not in the BEP formula.
Right.
So it's not there. That would come under your federal and state grants that are in the back of your budget books.
Right. But I mean, as far as growth money and everything, they don't count, do they?
No. It's only K through 6.
Did you give us in times past a list or a breakdown of schools on projected enrollment for next year and number of teachers School A was going to lose, or School B was going to lose?
Yes, sir, that was in your budget book. I did bring additional copies this evening at your request. I'd be glad to pass those around that show what our projected enrollments are going to be and the staffing levels.
While you're doing it, while they're being passed around, I'm going to interject something. Mr. Bart, Principal of Overall Creek, did a good job on his tour with us the other day, and understanding there's another one coming up for City Council. Mr. Bart and I will be guests of Truman on Thursday morning of this week, and hopefully that he will be, Don will be able to add a lot about what's going on at Overall Creek. And I'm assuming questions can be called in, maybe.
Oh, good, we'll think one up for you.
What?
We'll think of some tough ones for you.
Mr. Brown?
How difficult is it to amend or change the format of this report?
The one I just sent out to you?
No, the report that we get each month about the pupil teacher ratios and the attendance at the various schools. Because on the right-hand side of the report, you carry over some information from the previous year, and if, as we look at this report next year, you could carry the final pupil teacher ratio and the various K through 3, and then 4 through 6, where we could compare that to what we're running next year at the schools, I would like to be able to follow that.
Okay, I can add that in the bottom, where I have, at the bottom, middle of the page, where it has the pupil teacher ratio per grade? I'll be glad to do that. It's just an Excel document that I get to play with every month. I can move the stuff around.
I like the fact that we have a very low pupil teacher ratio, and I want to follow that closely next year.
Last year, at this time, we had a 19.52 PTR. This year, we're at 19.47. We ended the year last year with 19.47. So we're extremely consistent year to year. I do bring with me at every board meeting the last two or three years' worth of actual attendance enrollment data, so, but I'll be glad to make another chart down there, and Dr. Brown will be fine.
Thank you. I remember this now. Happens with dates, they say. Ms. Smith, you have a report you'd like to make, though?
Yes, I have a brief report.
All right.
I had a wonderful opportunity that I wanted to share with you. Last week, I went to Washington, D.C. with the Discovery Center. They asked me to go with the CEO, Tara McDougall, and their newest education specialist, Meredith Hillary, and share with our members of Congress and some of the associations about the partnership that we have with City Schools and the Discovery Center. And so we had a great experience and were really warmly invited into the members' offices. We met with Senator Alexander, Congressman Blackburn, Black, Fleishman, and also a member of Congressman Cooper's staffs. And I have to say that some of them were not, some of the members, and Senator Alexander may not have been prepared to sit down with us, they were going to spend, you know, just a little time with us, standing up and get a little information. But once they learned about the great partnership between the schools, they sat down and really listened and were really excited about it. So what the partnership is, is that we have four education specialists that are provided and paid for by the Discovery Center are going into each one of our fourth-grade classes on a bi-weekly basis. So we are getting a free, hands-on education for our students with manipulatives that there's no way that our school system could pay for. And so a lesson is taught by the regular teacher, and then the Discovery Center teachers go in. So in August, I hope to have on the agenda, I hope that we will invite the Discovery Center to come in and to explain their new steam bus, and which would be the science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, that they are literally rolling out right now. We provided the old school bus, just like you were talking about before, for the meals. We have an old school bus that they have wrapped and outfitted with these science manipulatives, that they will be able to exchange out for different grade levels. And they will go around to our schools. So part of the reason that they wanted to talk to the members of Congress that didn't represent Murfreesboro is to show them that the steam bus could go out to the outlying counties and share this program with them, and to see if maybe they had, could, if any kind of funding fell across their desks, that they would be able to help with that. So, and the other thing that they talked about was the number of children that come in for field trips from outlying counties. Anyway, we have a jewel in the Discovery Center, and I was really excited to share with our legislators about our partnership. And we also went to meet with the association, there's an association for science museums that the Discovery Center is a member of, and then also there is a program within the government that provides grants for museums, and so we did a little thank you with them. But it was a wonderful experience, and I just want to make sure that we thank the Discovery Center and those that contribute to the Discovery Center for all that they've done for the system.
Very good. Thank you.
Good job.
All right, any other business coming for our board tonight?
I have something.
Yes, ma'am?
I would like to recommend that we review the budget for our constituents a little bit at the next board meeting, because this is, it's just the way it fell out this time, a lot of it was not done on air through our budget studies, and usually our folks at home get to know more about, you know, the things we talked about, the things we were concerned about, the things we're excited about, just kind of a brief overview of our budget experience.
Okay.
Ms. Renier?
That was going to be my question, do we know when it will be presented at the Senate floor after the hearing?
Not yet, I'll let you know, probably first week in June. But I'll be getting some more information to you over the next week.
Thank you.
All right. Again, I welcome, continue to have Ms. Renier, Ms. Smith, and Mr. King, we're glad to have you on board with us, and with no other further whatevers, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second.
Snogging.
All in favor, get up and go.
Aye.
Aye.